Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council being held on Monday, September 27th at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good evening, Banks. Brightwell.
Yeah.
Cruz.
That's it.
Frazier. I know, I see him, Frazier.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum. I just seen him, I thought I did. Mandelbaum, he's here, he just...
Present.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. I'll now cite the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Next, we have one set of minutes, a committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 13th, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to have a clarification on item in the minutes before we proceed.
Yes. Go right ahead.
An item that deals with the grant, I think it's on page two of the minutes, and it indicates there's a five-day rule. Can someone explain to me what is the five-day rule? I tried earlier today, but I haven't gotten an answer.
Um, I guess the five-day...
Okay.
No, 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 I was gonna ask, the five-day rule in regards to, could you give us a little context around what...
Yeah, it's in the grant, in submitting the grant, I don't have it for me. It's on page two, and it's in submitting the grant.
Okay.
Any expenditures that occur within five days, I think that's what I was reading. I just want a clarification on that.
Okay. City Administrator, could you help us with that, or...
Madam President, I would only be speculating, I don't know, I apologize.
Okay.
Well, if someone could probably get to us, I don't wanna hold the minutes up. It's just an item, it might've, it could've been explained when it was presented. I'm assuming it came from somewhere. So, rather than hold the minutes up, I would like an explanation between now and sometime. So, with that...
Madam President, I can clarify what Councilman Brightwell is speaking of. This was for the disaster relief grant that we applied for. So, during this time, you're only eligible for the grant money during the eligible disaster time period, which was that five-day rule, which would've took you from July 7th through July 11th.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Is that, is that a theme, I mean, well, I don't wanna tie this up, I just wanna give a good explanation, so...
Right, it was for, we request our authorization to apply for the grant for the disaster assistance to the Emergency Management Division of the Michigan State Police, in the amount of $50,000 plus dollars for eligible disaster expenditures and costs that were through July 7th through July 11th. That was the time of the rain event that happened on July 7th, the summer rain event.
Okay.
So, this grant is contingent upon that disaster, within those five days, the money.
Madam President, the city clerk is correct. Without, I did not have the content of what grant we were talking about, I apologize.
No, no worries, thank you.
Okay, so...
So, I also have a couple of questions on those minutes.
Okay, so, Mr. Brightwell, are you finished with your questions?
Yeah, I'm clear, I'm clear, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, Councilman Brightwell, thank you very much. Councilman Frazier? We can't hear you, Councilman Frazier.
Oh. I didn't hear anybody, you asked Councilman Brightwell, but I didn't hear his answer. I thought you were waiting for his answer. All right, the two items that I have, one is the selection of the two locations for repair for collision. Is that all they're gonna do, is collision? If other, you know, I don't expect them to do motor overhauls or anything like that, but if some other problem happens, seems like we've tied ourselves only to collisions.
Council President, if I could respond to that?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Yes, sir, this is intended just for collisions. Occasionally, mechanical repairs come up that have to be done outside a motor pool, and they are addressed separately. This is just for collisions and related repairs.
Okay, so, a body gets rusty or something like that, you don't take it over there?
We might, but this, again, that would be treated as a separate purchase. This is only for repairs from accidents.
Let me...
So, that would be no, we would treat that as a separate incident and obtain bids separately for any sort of repair like that.
Can you...
I'm sorry, we can't hear you, Mr. Frazier.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I got lousy coverage in my house, so, I just moved from where I was at to a new place. The other, the other one is, I think it's just a typo, and that is for the funding for the... What is it, the... It's, it's the, I can't read my own writing. It's for the police department, their mugshot. In it, it says that we're spent, we're paying for it by using the drug, the drug money, an increase in the drug money bill. It says that there's an offsetting increase in the fund balance. Shouldn't that be decrease in the fund balance?
I'm not sure. Austin, would you please answer that, if you're on the, on the call?
Good evening, yes, it's actually an increase in the use of fund balance, which does sound counterintuitive, that is how we reduce fund balance, but it is correct that it is an increase in the use of fund balance.
Oh. In other words, you were leaving it alone, but now you're gonna go in and use it, so it's an increase in the use of the fund balance?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none, Council, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
Moved that, I moved that we approve the minutes of September 13th, 2021.
Support.
Thank you. It's been, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of September 13th, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Frazier.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
And Banks.
Yes.
Thank you. We have no consent agenda. Next, we have public hearing for PSLU 21-0004.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
First item is, as stated, is PSLU 21-004, next slide, please. Again, this was discussed two weeks ago at your study meeting. The petitioner and owner is West Southfield Investment LLC. This is located at 233-80 Telegraph Road, the former McVee's restaurant site. And the special use request is to use the property for warehousing of auto parts and parking of vehicles in the rear lot, next slide. The dash line in green is their existing business. The subject site is shown here in red, next slide. And the zoning is industrial, and the future land use is Telegraph Road Corridor, next slide. And here's a concept site plan that shows how the two properties will be, function as one. There'll be separate fencing, this, the subject site will not be open to the public, it'll only be open for use of the existing business located to the north. Next slide. This is just a show out, a layout showing how the property be used for warehousing of parts, next slide. Elevation will pretty much stay the same, next slide. And there'll be some enhancements on landscaping and fencing, as previously stated. I don't know if Fanar or his representatives are on the line, if they wanna make any comments before we open a public hearing. Again, the reason there's a special land use is, it's because it's a non-manufacturing site and requires a special land use. I don't see them on, Madam Chair, if you wanna proceed to the public hearing, we have to answer any questions afterwards.
Okay. This is a public hearing for PSLU 21-0004, the special use request. I will now declare the public hearing open, and if there's anyone that would like to speak to this topic, would you please raise your hand or push star three to be recognized by the clerk?
Madam President, the lines are open, if anyone wants to speak.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is for the, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. We are, can you refresh my memory, what type of business is going to be there at the old Mr. McVee's?
It's a warehousing for auto parts.
Okay. I just wanted to ask whether or not an environmental study has been done in reference to whether or not the machinery or the parts is going to pose any type of pollution problem? I know that it's probably zoned for that type of business, and there's no immediate houses facing Telegraph, but a lot of times, the air quality from the machinery shaping and molding the parts gives off a very distinct smell. Has that been addressed, or do they have anything to contain the smell, potential smell, within their, their organization or their plant there? And that's all I have. I am in support of new businesses coming to Southfield, which we always value, but we also wanna be concerned anytime it's anything to do with manufacturing, the air quality. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Madam President, at this time, it doesn't appear to be anyone else that wants to speak during this public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I will now declare the public hearing closed, and I will turn to Council. And I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No questions, I support.
Councilman Frazier?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
I have no question for me on this, thank you.
And Councilman Mandelbaum?
I have no questions either, thank you.
Great. Mr. Crowde?
Yes, I just, clarification from the public comment. There is no manufacturing on the site, this is an auto body repair, custom repair. So, just the parts for the, for the automotive repair at the existing facility will be housed here. They won't be manufacturing any parts. Other than that, the planning department is supportive and has recommended resolution that possibly could be on the next slide. So, we would ask if there's no further questions or comments that you give a favorable approval, subject to the following. And I'll dispense from reading each one unless you want me to.
No, that's not necessary. Council? Yes, we'll just, are we all in favor of approving this special land use?
Councilwoman Banks, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
PSLU 21-0004, special use request of Fanar Salama to use an existing building for parking and general storage, and to construct a fence for vehicle storage on property located at 233-80 Telegraph Road, be approved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the PSLU 21-0004 special use request. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cruz?
Support.
This is a roll call? This is a roll call, yes or no?
Clerk Hawkins, yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to our next public hearing, which is PZRODD 21-0002, which is a rezoning request with the overlay development district development agreement with Mr. Hassan Jawad, representing Middle Point Investment Group LLC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next slide, please. Again, this is the property located across the street from City Hall, located at the northwest corner of Evergreen Road and Civic Center Drive, Sidewell Parcels 2422-277-003, 004, and 005, totaling approximately 8.18 acres. Existing zoning is regional center, proposed zoning is overlay development district. It is located in the Southfield City Center subarea, and it is eligible for ODD, and it's proposed for construction of mixed-use development with retail, office, and multiple family units in multiple phases, next slide. Again, this was discussed a couple of weeks ago. I put this historic photo in for Council and the residents to see that for many decades, there were three office complexes that existed on the site. Those were torn down, I believe in 2010, and the site has remained idle until, until this development proposal, next slide. There was asked about walkability. The concentric rings represent a quarter-mile radius or a five-minute walk, a half a mile radius or a 10-minute walk, and there are significant amount of residential subdivisions, neighborhoods, complexes within walking distance, including Lawrence Tech University, that has 1,000 student dorm rooms on site, next slide. This is the existing configuration of the three lots and parcels that I had indicated, next slide. And we've already gone over the zoning and the master plan, which are consistent with the request, next slide. And from here, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jawad and his team to do a quick overview of the concept plans. You will be seeing specifics on phased site plan development in the upcoming few months, but for tonight, we're just concentrating on the concept plan. He has provided several different options, depending on market conditions, but we wanna encapsulate that, all those particular options in the overlay development agreement, to give him the greatest flexibility in the future and to be transparent on what the expectations are for the site. And with that, with your permission, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jawad.
Yes.
Good evening, members of Council. Thank you for your time this evening. As, as you take a look at the screen, you see the general concept of site plan, including Phase 1. We are seeking your approval this evening on the ODD so that we can follow with our site plan for a mixed-use development consisting of retail, open park spaces, residential, as well as potentially some, some office space across the street. Harry, do you guys plan on taking them through any additional slides, or are we just going to keep the one slide on up?
No, we could just, we've had to group some of the phases just to expedite on the presentation, since you gave this before, so if you...
Yeah, that's fine.
...high-level overview, we can stop when needed.
Okay, and I'll just, I'll state that, as you can see, we've had different variations that we are providing, but you will very soon see site plan of Phase 1 before you. And again, I emphasize that we've paid special attention to open spaces, pedestrian amenities, pocket parks, et cetera. I don't have much more to add beyond that, but I'm here for any questions that anybody might have as we move forward.
And if we could, Rick, can you just quickly go through the slides and get us to the questions and comment period? Next slide. These, again, are several phases of development, there's a full concept plan. These are 3D illustrations of what the entire build-out could look like over multiple phases, with multifamily residential, retail, office, and pocket parks. These are all included in your packet, and they'll be made part and parcel to the overlay development agreement under exhibits. And with that, Madam Chair, I would suggest that, can we go back one slide, please? If we could open the public hearing, and then we'll be happy to answer any of your questions that Council may have after the public hearing has been concluded, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, this is a public hearing for PZRODD 21-0002, which is the rezoning request with the overlay development district development agreement with Mr. Hassan Jawad. I now declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this item, please raise your hand for the clerk to recognize you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Okay, good evening, this is Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I just wanted to say that I am in total support of the rezoning request from Mr. Hassan Jawad. You know, he has been an excellent corporate citizen in the city of Southfield. If you want to go back to when he purchased and was developing the property down the street on Evergreen from City Hall, I remember the economy had basically stalled, and most developers would've gone with any type of business just to occupy the spaces that was available in that development. And I applauded Mr. Hassan Jawad for not being so overly anxious to rent to just anyone. He took his time, and he rented to places and businesses that reflected what we wanted as a city in that particular area and right down the street from City Hall. So, I wanna thank him for that. That property is long overdue, and to have someone that wants to develop, again, another nice piece of property right across from the city of Southfield is amazing. It was great to have the concerts there during the day, but the parking lot wrecked havoc on your sandals, and your feet were always swollen at the end of the concert from walking on some of the potholes. So, I am so happy that this property is going to be developed, and if he does it with the same precision, or greater, that he did with the property down the street, it is going to be amazing, and it will only add to the value of the city of Southfield. So, I just wanted to say, I'm in total support of the rezoning request by Mr. Hassan Jawad, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Madam President, at this time, it doesn't appear anyone, that anyone else would like to speak during this public hearing.
Okay, thank you, seeing none. I now declare the public hearing closed, and Council, I'll start with you. Councilman Brightwell?
I have a question, over the life of this project, I think I've asked, and all my questions have been answered, thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Well, I think Hassan Jawad has been a very good steward to the city, and I totally am in agreement with everything that a resident just called in to speak to, that, you know, this is something we wanna support, so, I have no reservations whatsoever, so, I will support this, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yes, we're looking at the concept now, and so, they're not in, we're not into details. When I was going through the package, I saw a couple of things that I'd like to bring up later on. They're just minor things, but as far as the development itself, I'm in full support.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
To echo my colleagues, I mean, I'm too in full support of this. I've talked to Mr. Jawad about this quite a lot, and I'm really excited about the potential for that space. So, with that, that's all my comments.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned during the study session, when we first looked at this, this is, this is great. Mr. Jawad has always been a great steward in the city, especially with his two properties now on Evergreen. They're, they're always, they're kept up, there's no issues, and I believe that this is, he'll be a great asset for this part of the city as well, to develop this, this corner and help us create that downtown feel that we keep looking for. So, I am in full support of this as well, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Crowde?
Yeah, Mr. Frazier, I'm just curious if you wouldn't mind just articulating some of your comments, just so that if we need to incorporate them in the agreement, I'd like to make sure that I fully understand what you're looking for. If they're site-specific, you will see that in a couple of months, but if there's some general comments...
No, it is, it is.
...we should be aware of.
Yeah, it is, site-specific for the senior... Yeah, it is. Site specific for the senior living quarters.
Okay.
Uh, some of the, some of the things that I've experienced when my wife was ill that I saw could add to the uh, safety and, uh, for instance, uh, comfort heights. I didn't say anything about comfort height toilets. And it'd be easy, it's much easier for a senior to get off, to sit down and get up from uh, taller uh, stool than the, the regular stools. And also uh, grab bars because sometimes uh, they don't have uh, stronger upper body strength and they need the assistance of uh, helping themselves get down and get, get back up. It's things like that, just.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure Mr. uh, Jawad is um, taking notes as well. Madam Chair, if there's no other questions or comments, we can go to the um, recommended resolution on the next line.
Okay.
And uh, again, um, we're recommending that the ODD uh, development uh, rezoning in agreement get approved by council and that the uh, petitioner to work with the planning department and the city attorney to finalize the overlay development district agreement, including all the um, supporting documents. And the petitioner will seek site plan approval as a subsequent phase uh, with planning commission and and city council.
Okay, council, may we have, may I have a motion?
Approved. Councilman Cruz.
Councilman Mandelbaum, second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for the approval of P Z R O D D two one dash zero 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 two. The rezoning request with the overlay development district development agreement of Mr. Hassan Jawad. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Madam Chair, now would be appropriate time to introduce ordinance number seventeen forty-four.
Yes.
Chair, Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell, I would like to, I would like to interview ordinance number one seven four four.
Support, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for the introduction of ordinance number one seven four four. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Frazier?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, our last uh, public hearing is for P Z T A two one dash zero 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 four B, which are the council initial, initiated zoning ordinance text amendments.
Yeah, th- thank you, Madam Chair. Um, again, these items were reviewed uh, two weeks ago during the study session. I'll do a brief overview and um, be able to uh, answer any questions that the council may have. Next slide. Uh, so um, the text amendments includes, including revising lighting requirements, especially in residential areas. And um, it it helps with reducing of glare and adjacent lighting. Next slide. And this is just an example of some of the complaints that we received of excessive residential lighting during, during the COVID period. And um, as I stated earlier, I think easy access to commercial grade lighting and the fact that many people are staying at home, we've had an overabundance of ze- overzealous uh, lighting on, in residential areas that are impacting neighbors, adjacent neighbors and neighbors um, across the street. Next slide. We have um, if I could, uh, Finar, I believe you're
Yes.
Mute, please, and your item has already been dealt with. So if you could go mute, we're handling another item right now.
Sorry about that.
Um, we have a number of uh, definitions that are being updated, including gyms, health and fitness club, indoor recreation center, kennels, non-conforming uses in lots, personal services, pet daycare and salons. Next slide. Section amendments include adding additional language and cleaning up non-conformities, uh, salon parking requirements, indoor recreational centers as a special land use in single family and permitted in uh, regional center and light industrial. Personal service language consistency in multiple sections, religious assembly language consistency in multiple sections. Health and fitness clubs permitted in regional uh, service, regional center and B three. And uh, and a new provision for kennels and pet daycare as a special land use in B three and permitted, permitted in uh, light industrial and industrial. Next slide. Uh, again, this is an overview of all of the various sections that are being updated. Uh, as I previously stated, many of these um, are are a result of of COVID-related businesses, a result of differences in retail shopping and also based on the needs of many of the businesses and residents who have contacted us over the last year and a half. With that, um, I would suggest we open the public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at the uh, conclusion of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I now declare the public hearing open for P Z T A two one dash zero 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 four B. Madam Clerk, would you please open the lines and anyone that wishes to speak, please raise your hand.
This is Pamela Gerald. Um, there's a lot of static on your line, so I was hearing like every other word and I'm speaking on a headset.
Okay, we did ask others to mute their lines when they're not speaking, so we apologize for any inconvenience.
Yeah, some, some people are not doing it, and it's a lot of static. I mean, a lot of static. If you could just real quickly give me another brief overview.
Uh, no, I can't, uh, you know, I don't know, we're, we're just doing the text amendment.
Okay, well, since I didn't get all the information, I guess I will forego the opportunity to speak at the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize about that.
Their audio.
Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none. I now declare the public hearing closed. Uh, council, I'll start with you. Um, Councilman Cruz?
Uh, no questions from me. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Frazier? Okay, Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
And Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Councilman Frazier?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's no questions from uh, the council, so, uh, Terry?
Yes, if we could go to the next slide, please. Oh, uh, apparently we don't have a recommended resolution, but um, we ask that you approve. Can we go back one slide, please? Um, we ask you to approve the proposed text amendments as presented. And then um, we'll need you to introduce ordinance number seventeen forty-five as a separate motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, may I have a motion?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
You approve? Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman Mandelbaum.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve um, P Z T, and I'm sorry. Sorry, my screen just blinked out on me, but I would like to approve the uh, text amendments that we just discussed.
And now support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of P Z T A two one dash zero 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 four B. The council initiated zoning ordinance text amendment to amend titles five zoning and planning. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Thank, thank you, um, council. Next item, if your consideration is to introduce ordinance number seventeen forty-five.
Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell, I would like to, I would like to introduce ordinance number one seven four five.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier for the introduction of ordinance number one seven four five. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next we will move to our um, with, to our uh, agenda for uh, this discussion and for action. Our first item is the authorization to enter into the interlocal agreement for information technology services with Oakland County. I don't know if Rene Hinahusa is on the line.
Madam President, if he's not, I I will field this question. We're, we are asking council to recognize an amendment. Just bear with me one second. Uh, we're requesting to uh, authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement with Oakland County. Uh, this agreement is actually a consolidation of our agreement that we have for Clemens, uh, the Southfield Fire Department and our court uh, system. The original contract was executed in two thousand and seventeen uh, and was a five-year contract. The fiscal impact of this item um, is the payment or the expenditure is paid for our uh, technology services department in the annual amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars uh, budgeted in the computer services account. The fire department is paying five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, twenty-five cents for fire records management systems, and that is also budgeted in the fire department. And the thirty-six district court pays twenty-five hundred dollars for jury management software. Uh, so this evening, we're asking council to authorize uh, the mayor and city clerk authority to sign the interlocal agreement with Oakland County on behalf of the city. The agreement was attached for council's approval, and as always with all of our contracts, they are not executed till the city attorney's office has signed off.
Okay, um, for discussion, I'll turn to council, and I'll start with you, uh, Councilman Frazier.
Uh, I have no questions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Mandelbaum?
I have no questions on this either. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Um, I have a question. Uh, Clemens, Clemens is a very robust piece of software, and and it does a lot. Um, and is there an alternative to Clemens? Because this, this, this software is so robust, and I've been around the city long enough to realize that we a hundred percent dependent on this. Is it, is there an alternative to Clemens? If this thing goes down, what, what about, what are, are our alternative?
Uh, may I, Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn?
Yes.
It is my understanding that the Clemens software is a package used throughout all of Oakland County. Uh, as we, our municipality in Oakland County, we are cannot, connected to it. We have extensive redundancy in our systems. If ours, you know, we go down, we can access through other communities, uh, much the same ways our dispatch works. Um, but I might, if, I believe your, your question, Mr. Brightwell, or Councilman Brightwell is, is there an alternative to Clemens? And I, the answer is no, I don't believe there is.
Okay, yeah, probably what my question was, because it's, it's robust, and we, we uh, I, I was our public safety uh, side of the house seem to be a hundred percent dependent on this. Uh, uh, software. And I got, I got the feeling that is, there is no alternative, and I'm assuming this thing is uh, highly maintained and, oh, well, I think you pretty much, um, and we kind of pretty much answered the question, and maybe there is nothing else out there other than Clemens. Maybe it goes down, we're just in the water until they fix it?
That's correct, but I'm not aware, you know, it's very robust and I don't think if, I don't think we've had too many problems with it. I, there, if if we are, it's more usually about electrical backup and that. And we have got, uh, you know, for example, a couple of weeks ago, we did have a blackout on campus and the generators kicked in within a matter of minutes.
Right, okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just talking about Clemens uh, and how we use it. Um, and I'm, oh, okay, so I'm, I'm just going with the knowledge right now. There, there's no backup to Clemens. If it goes down, we're in the water until they fix Clemens for the purpose for which we are using it. Okay, all right, no problem. I, it's, it's, it obviously does a good job, and I, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
But there we go now. Sorry about that. Um, yes, uh, I don't really have any questions about this. In fact, I don't have any questions about any of the things that, having already read them. Um, i- is this something that we can move forward and uh, like, consider agenda and just move on to the consent, and not have to go through each one of these uh, piece by piece? Uh, I think most of these are kind of routine things as I read them. And I may be wrong, and my council members may not agree with me, or, or you, Madam President, but I just want to put that out there. But uh, on this particular issue, I have no problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and no, we do need to, and the residents have asked for uh, us to at least mention each item and then, uh, you know, let them know exactly what it is that we're voting on. So that's why we will mention the items that's on the agenda and then vote on them. We will vote, uh, you know, to pass or not to pass tonight if the council so des- desires to do that. Um, one other thing.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem. Uh, Mr. Mayor, did you have any comments regarding this item?
Uh, no, I don't. I think it's um, something we need to have, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Uh, were there any other comments or anything? No? Council, uh, would you like to entertain a motion?
Councilwoman Banks? I move to au- I, I move um, to authorize um, that the city enter into an interlocal agreement for information technology services with Oakland County.
Mark?
Thank you. It's been moved by council, Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Frazier for the approved authorization to enter into the interlocal agreement for information technology services with Oakland County. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item is the facility maintenance budget amendment request.
Good evening, Council President John McCretta. This is for the police garage. The water from the roof of the police station and from the entire plaza deck flows through the garage to a sump system that removes it from the building. Unfortunately, the pipes throughout the police garage have rusted away, and it's quite a lot of water. Pipes are up to fifteen inches in size. Basement is deluged with water every time it rains. It doesn't flood because it goes to floor drains, but it still literally rains inside when it rains outside. This has been authorized as an emergency repair by City Administrator Zorn. It has also been taken before the finance committee. We're simply asking now for a budget amendment to replace the funds that were expended on this because it was not budgeted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, counsel? Starting with you, Councilman Frazier?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
And Councilman Cruz?
Questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the facility maintenance budget amendment request.
Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell, I make a motion to approve the facility maintenance budget amendment request.
Support.
Councilman Mandelbaum seconds.
Thank you. It's been motioned by, moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier for the approval of the facility maintenance budget amendment request. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Thank you. Our, our next item is the resolution seeking the establishment of a regional urban deer management plan for Oakland County.
Thank you, Council President. On August ninth, Farmington Hill City Council adopted a resolution urging a unified approach to wildlife and deer in particular, including the D N R, Oakland County, and neighboring communities. They urged other communities to pass similar resolutions in support. On September fourteenth, the Wildlife Advisory Commission met, discussed the resolution, and voted unanimously to support it. The resolution is basically what was passed with Farmington Hills, slightly modified to meet, to meet our city. But the resolution is recommended for passing, and just to let you know, the Wildlife Commission is not waiting just on a regional aspect. We had three meetings today to discuss a better and bigger presence on the web, an educational opportunity partnership with the library, and additional deer crossing signage before October fifteenth, which is when the deer become most active. But in addition to these actions, they are recommending that the city adopt the attached resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, I'll, I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh, thank you. And so, uh, once this, uh, once this resolution is approved, uh, then what? Do we reach out to the, um, I, I guess I'm trying to see what the next steps would be. I mean, I see them in the, in the resolution, but have we been like talking with the state, for example, the D N R, um, our neighbors? Uh, I know, I think we talked about it here in this meeting, or, um, and certainly know that Farmington Hills has a similar, uh, uh, resolution. Have we been talking to them already, and are we just, this is just a formal, um, uh, the formal, formalizing the next steps of what we need to do?
Yes, sir. This is really the, I would say, start of the formal process. There certainly have been informal discussions. One of the plans for the educational meeting is to have D N R representative on as a panelist. The unfortunate thing with the state is, just my own thought, they appear to really, you're very strong on ownership of the deer, but not ownership of the problems that relate to the deer. And that's the idea to help, help the state become more active in this problem that they are involved in, just not actively.
Okay, that's, uh, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Oh, Jason, sorry, Councilman Hoskins actually asked the question that I had, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Um, no question. I just wanted to indicate that I'm, um, I'm impressed with the work of our Wildlife Advisory Commission in the presentation they made to us a couple, uh, several weeks ago. Um, so that's it. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes, uh, likewise, and I appreciate the work that John's been doing on this, because, uh, it's a very hard thing to get your arms around this type of issue, and, uh, I think it's been a wonderful job for the city. So I just wanted to give kudos to him as we move forward. Thank you.
And Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, uh, I would also like to say that, uh, uh, deer don't respect any city boundaries, so uh, it's good that we're linking up with other communities so that we can work together to see if we can get down the other side of this, because if you read the, the, uh, Nine Mile West, I don't know if you get that thing, it's, uh, a junior Facebook, the Nine Mile West thing, every once in a while, you hear somebody that runs into a coyote, or, you know, some other problem. So I think, uh, kudos go to Brother John.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, did you have any comments?
Yes, um, kind of following up on where, uh, several other people had said, I am wondering if, um, other communities, um, this resolution has been shared, could be shared with other communities to urge them to do the same thing. Um, I really think, uh, we need county leadership, um, on this, as, uh, has been stated, the deer don't respect municipal boundaries, and I would urge, um, that uh, we reach out, um, um, to, uh, other neighbors, um, and actually all of Oakland County, because it, um, uh, impacts all of us, um, more so in the more densely populated South End. But I, I, I think that's the next step that has to take place here, uh, so that we can get the, some county, um, oomph behind this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the, um, the resolution that we adopted, we tweaked it a little bit, but the city of Farmington Hills did send it out countywide a couple weeks ago, and each, um, municipality just cartailed it to their needs and of their specific community, so it, it was sent out in mass form.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, but I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, counsel, would, uh, could I have a motion? For the approval of the resolution?
Councilwoman Banks? Yes, um, I move that the resolution seeking the establishment of a regional urban deer management plan for Oakland County as presented be approved.
Support. Councilman Cruz?
Okay. It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of the resolution seeking the establishment of a regional urban deer management plan for Oakland County. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Our next item is the city council expenditure policy. I believe, uh, the Finance Subcommittee wanted to bring this forward for discussion.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, if you like, I will just sort of key this up. Um, each, each year, you know, sometimes when we have new individuals on council, there's always a discussion of what's allowed and what's not allowed, and a lot of things are transmitted, uh, are transferred by way of word of mouth, and, and also, um, by, by communication coming from the, uh, our city clerk's office. So it got to, to the Finance Committee that, uh, we should really just take a look at this and perhaps put out something new and current. And so, uh, we had a robust discussion about it on the Finance Committee with the members and also staff. And so I, I, um, I suggested we form a subcommittee, and the subcommittee, um, was formed, and I had Mrs. Banks, uh, was on the committee, and, uh, I wanted her there because of her familiarity with the city of Southfield. Well, um, Councilman, um, Mandelbaum there, and I wanted him there to represent leadership. And also by way of Mr. Zorn, I wanted, um, Mr. Michaels to be on the, uh, subcommittee because he's, uh, his department normally approves and sign off on, um, reimbursement. So I think we got a very good, um, review of what's, what's there, and I would like to just open it, and I I mentioned to Banks, and also Austin, and, 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 uh, Al, uh, already, that we will probably get a good, probably get a discussion tonight about this, so I would like all council members to just sort of hone in, because uh, all of us who have ever worked in corporate America, we know about expense reports, you know, what's allowed and what's not allowed. So there, there are, there are rules and regulations, so I would like the Southfield to have our rules and regulations, um, really identified, and there's no ambiguity, what is and what is not, um, allowed. So with that, Madam Chair, if you please, uh, let's have, have an open discussion about this item.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll get each council person to, uh, to weigh in with any questions or concerns for you, um. Then I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so for me, I'm glad, um, I'm glad I'm going first, although I, I do want to hear a discussion from the rest of the council, because for me, uh, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the quote-unquote good old days look like on this. You know, my experience on council has been pretty much in COVID, uh, so there hasn't been any, um, at least as far as the conference and trainings go, I, I haven't been able to do that much. I did a, a virtual training with the National League of Cities, um, last year, but that's just been about it. Um, I know that having something, uh, in paper, or in writing, on paper, uh, will be helpful. I'm certainly for the next, uh, crop of council people, who are, whomever they may be, um. Right now, I don't see any issues. I also don't really have anything to compare it to. I mean, it seems fine to me, but I don't know what, I mean, maybe there are things that are better, may, maybe there are things that are better, and I'm, I'm actually um, looking forward to hearing a discussion, if any, uh, on this, because maybe what we're doing right now might, might be fine, and or maybe this is what we're doing right now, um, and now we're just putting it in writing somewhere. Um, so those are just my quick thoughts on this.
Okay, and, and to, uh, Mr. Hoskins' questions, what changed? I mean, we had a policy in place. I remember, um, Austin Michaels, he put forth a, an extensive, um, travel document using the IRS guidelines for travel and dinners and that, and I know that we're, the city is the reimbursement type of thing where we put in an expense report, and it goes before council for approval before it's paid out. So I guess to further the discussion along, is anything, what, what, if anything, is changing?
Well, I think- President? Oh, Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if I can answer that question, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if anything is necessarily changing. I think that we are just clarifying, and, um, when I say clarifying, um, some, some of the areas under membership, supplies, um, miscellaneous, um, it's, it's just a clarification. Um, in creating this policy, it was the hope of the subcommittee and the Council Finance Committee that there would be a, um, printed copy that would be given to all council members of a policy. I think historically, we're, we're all familiar with our travel policy, and, um, and we've even actually fine tuned that in that all expenditures, um, you know, must be incurred to benefit the city. And when it comes to conferences and training, um, the conferences and trainings, um, should be hosted and sponsored by organizations to which the city is a member. Um, and those do not require prior council authorization. But if it's a conference or training to which the city is not a member, that would be brought before the council, um, for either approval or denial. So it's just basically clarifying, um, some of the different areas. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, uh, because I thought that's what we do now. I, I, but I'll, I'll go through the rest of the coun- I, I thought that's what we do now. Any, anything that we, any conference or any training or anything, we incur, we go to the conference and put it on an expense report, and it goes before council for approval or denial. Is that now changing?
Well, but, well, I think what we're saying now is that we want you to ask ahead of time. Example, if you want to go to a grant writing conference, um, is, is that something that really, um, should be approved or not approved? So that would come before the council ahead of time versus after you already, already went, already spent the money, and already are, already want reimbursements. So-
President, if I could say, if I could say, Madam President, this is Councilman Cruz. Um, for the eight years that I've been on city council, we have never had prior approval. Uh, we have done, we have, uh, done professional development, and, and, uh, the city has taken care of it for us, and then we return our receipts, and then we, we also return our benefits from having gone there. Um, this is, this is like, I don't even know where this is coming from, to be honest. Um, I mean, I'm okay with the fact that if we as a council right now want to say, you know, we want prior approval before you register for something of that nature, but it, it has never been the case that we had to do it in, in advance, uh, to be a part of some type of learning session and, um, or, or training. It was just a point that we brought something back, and that's, that's the main thing, as far as I'm concerned. And at this, and that we as a council thought that that was an appropriate thing to bring back, and, uh, you know, most of the time, I hate to say it, I mean, most of the time, our council has not used it. Um, you could look, we can go back over the years, people have not been going to, uh, going through professional development at all. And so, you know, the money we set aside for that, we haven't even seen, we haven't made use of it. I have, uh, personally, Lloyd Cruz, Councilman, I have not, you know, but, you know, a lot of my other colleagues have not, and, uh, and, you know, uh, President, you and I, we were at the National League Cities, uh, before at that conference, and we did all kinds of things, looking at different types of things what cities are doing, and, uh, we brought that knowledge back. And, uh, we brought that knowledge back to the City of Southfield. And everybody should have the opportunity to do that. But, uh, so I don't see what, what the problem is with this current process. I think we are good where we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and, and I don't think it's the National League of City, uh, uh, conferences and things that they were talking about. They said that those were okay. I just had two thoughts. And, um, that was, if we do a prior approval, does that mean we still have to come back and put it on an expense report for any of the other things like mileage or supplies or airplane, hotel or anything that, would that have to be also? I mean, are we doubling the work for us? That's one side. And then is this hindering the clerk's office? Because a lot of these approvals or conferences, we rely on the clerk to make those arrangements for us. And, um, are we now? Can they do that or do they have to wait for council to do, if we, if this is approved the way it's being presented tonight?
Uh, Mad-
I could, Madam President, this is Councilman Cruz. I'm sorry, Brightwell, uh, I just wanted to say, I think everything is fine the way it is. That's just my perspective. I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Brightwell.
Yeah, I just want to jump in based on, as, as the Finance Chair. Uh, this item, uh, is standard routine practices. When you're spending corporate money or taxpayer money, you get approval, uh, to expend that money before you expend the money. We don't, we don't prefer you not coming back asking for forgiveness. And I'm, since I've been on council, and I'm not going to say anything that will harm anybody. But I've seen misuse of this particular pot of money by council personnel. This is early on when I was on council. And I think it had to be adjudicated, uh, by the council president. It was so, it was rather, rather egregious based on prior practices by council. So, um, as far as getting approval, that should not be an issue. I think all of us who have ever worked for anybody know that we had to get approval to do certain, expense cer- certain degrees of money. I would approve somebody, I had to get some, some approval from them both to make, to take certain classes, seminars. So I don't think that, that should be an issue because this, this money, we can't just jump or willy nilly spend it. But we have some past practices and procedures that are retained by like consent agenda. On the past practicing procedures there, the National League of City, the Michigan Municipal League, the Government Finance Officers Association, those are historical, uh, things that, um, that we spend money on. So that, that kind of preclude those things. But this, this will be dealing with things that are kind of out of the box, out of the norm. Uh, and it's, it's not, it's not, um, it's, it's not unusual. I'm gonna go back to my original statement. It's not unusual to get approval for something, for most adults that work in corporate America. Uh, and I, I know the president of the company I used to work for, he used to run it by the board of directors. Some of his expenditures, you know, um, he, you know, so somebody had to approve somebody. Uh, so that, and I'm, I'm kind of, uh, this, this is, this is just an, an identification for what we have is, is, uh, for the City of Southfield Council. It's, it's on paper and it's spelled out. These are the, the norms. And if we go outside of those, there's nothing wrong with just saying, this, this is what I'm gonna do. Um, and I, I don't want to monopolize this. I think Ms. Banks and Mr. Manobon and Austin, they did a wonderful job of, um, detailing these things. But I just jumped in just from my corporate experience standpoint that, uh, um, it's, it's not unusual to get approval. And as far as work, I don't think, uh, we wouldn't ask the clerk to initiate anything until it was actually approved. And so that's when the work would initiate, just like anything else when it's initiated. For Michigan Municipal League or, uh, uh, any other thing that, that, that we are attending, which is, which is norm, which is part of the norm. So I, I didn't, I don't want to mon- monopolize this, but go to just thoughts.
Okay, um, Councilman Frazier?
Madam President, I'm sorry, this is Councilman Cruz again. Uh, a couple of things. Number one, I don't disagree with the comment that, uh, Councilwoman Brightwell just said. Um, in my professional career, I have, uh, we've always had to have prior approval to do certain things. So I have no problem with that. That's not what I'm just talking about, or should say. Um, two, I take issue with the fact that the comment with my, that my colleague made, I'm sorry, uh, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Banks, about the, um, the grant writing. Uh, cause I, I know that was a serious shot at someone that was on our council. And I think that was, I think that's what, that was a kind of low blow. Um, because still, that person brings that information back to the council. And that's what professional development is all about. It's about gaining knowledge to make your city better. So I never had any, any problems about that at all. So I would just say, you know, things in my mind are the way that's just, that, that they should be. And, uh, I know, I, I hope that we just not even make any changes at this point. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilman Frazier, can we hear from you tonight?
Sure. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I think if we go all the way back, uh, the original, I think the original idea was to, uh, allow the council to go to different, uh, uh, meetings that were sponsored by, uh, Michigan Municipal League and National League of Cities to find out what was going on in other communities and bring back the good ideas. Uh, but there's, there's another layer to that too. And that is, the Michigan Municipal League has subsets and we're in Region One. I don't know if anyone on any council that I've sat on has ever attended a Region One meeting. But Region One meetings, uh, people from other communities in our general area, but there's, uh, a specific, uh, number of communities that are in Region One that meet on a regular basis. If you're going to be active in, in the Michigan Municipal League, you need to be involved in these kinds of things. Another subset is, uh, uh, MBC Leo. It's Michigan Black Caucus Local Elected Officials. And it's not for only people of color. Anyone can join MBC Leo. But the MBC Leo works on things that are happening around the state. Uh, same thing with the National League of Cities. Uh, the National League of Cities, uh, I was very active in the National League of Cities, uh, for a long time. And they have, uh, and they, they have committees. And I was on, uh, two different committees that meet not only when the National League of Cities goes to Washington or the one in the fall when they go to some other community, uh, around the country. Uh, but these, uh, subcommittees meet a couple of times during the summertime. And I was always, you know, a little hesitant about spending Southfield's money because I didn't really think I brought that much back from the summer meetings. But when I went to Washington DC or, uh, whatever community the fall meeting was in, and I went to the Subcommittee meetings and they had takeout material. I packed my briefcase full of material and brought it back and shared it with pe- the people here in Southfield on the, on the council so that they would have some information about what was going on in other communities. So I think that was the idea of the funding that was, uh, originally designed for the council people to, to, uh, use to go to these other meetings. And, uh, little by little, I think somebody said, well, I go to this, I go to that. And, uh, we even had, uh, councilperson at one time said, I think we ought to put all the money in one bundle and first come, first served. And that didn't go over. So, um, I don't disagree with what the Finance Committee did. I just think that we all need to understand what the original concept was for funding individual council members to go to meetings. And it was for those meetings that had a direct benefit for the City of Southfield. And, uh, that's my piece.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, I'm sorry, if I can intercede for one second. I just wanted to piggyback on what, uh, Mr. Frazier just said and add to it. The, um, Congressional Black Caucus that, uh, also takes place in DC as well. Um, I've gone to it twice. Um, and our people of Southfield have sent me there. And I think that, uh, I brought back a number of great things, uh, for the city in terms of my, my learning and, uh, and sharing, as, uh, Mr. Frazier said, uh, just a moment ago. And so I just wanted to make sure that was clear too, that, you know, that's not just, just because it's the, um, you know, the term black is in there, it doesn't mean that that's the only people that are there. There are all types of folks there from every region, every, uh, race, ethnicity. All those things are there because we're all about diversity. We're all about sustainability and inclusion. And so, um, I, I would hate that anyone would think that that's not a valid place to go to as well. Thank you.
So I, I would say that that's, uh, a good example of the kind of learning that you can get someplace else and bring it back to Southfield and use it to our advantage.
Okay. Okay, and, um, we've heard from Nancy and from, uh, Dan, I'm sorry, we've heard from Councilwoman Banks. Did you want to add anything else?
The, the only other thing I want to add is that, again, we just wanted to have something in writing for every council member to have and any new member, uh, any new councilperson coming forward. Um, so if they had any questions with reference, and this is not only conferences, we're also talking, excuse me, memberships, you know, supplies, miscellaneous items. And we tried to write down and think of everything that would be allowed, um, so that we would all be on the same page. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, I think, don't we already have something like that? Uh, Madam Clerk and, uh, to the Finance Chair, uh, I'm not Finance, but the, um, Austin Michaels?
Um, Madam President, it's a, it's a couple of things. Um, council has notoriously, um, been able, and they haven't used it, but have the ability to, uh, order standard supplies um, and things of that nature, um, through their, uh, the supply and operating, uh, supplies line item. Um, and I did have one question, um, in reference to this policy, if I could ask, Madam President?
Um, yes, you can, but before you do, I was wondering, do, but don't we have something in writing? I thought we had a policy because I remember, and maybe it was just the travel policy that I'm thinking, that Austin had created here a couple of years or so ago?
Yeah, we did adopt a new travel policy. Um, I want to say was that nineteen or eighteen?
Okay, so do we have something in writing? Because that's what I'm hearing.
I can send out the travel policy if needed.
Not only that, but I mean, like, our expenditure is what we, like, what first office applies and that. What applies to council? Do we have like a written policy? Cause an expenditure policy for city council, do we have that?
Normally it's just standard, uh, okay, but standard, uh, operating supplies from council. It's not utilized a lot. It's just, you know, paper, pencils, staplers, uh-
Madam Chair, one of the reasons for this is to put everything on the table, a baseline. This is the baseline going forward. This is what we know now with respect to council expenditure. And so, we have anything out there or not, everything now is, this is the baseline starting point. And when I got on council, they gave me a sheet of paper. They sat down with me and walked me through different things. Now, I don't see it anymore. So this is the new baseline.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, uh, Madam Clerk. You said you had something else you wanted to add?
In reviewing this policy, I just have one question. Uh, periodically, the county, um, Oakland County, and sometimes even Wayne County and Livingston County offers up training to elected officials, i.e. a training could be a brownfield development training, a, um, training for a zoning board of appeals. These trainings are generally a hundred dollars or less. Uh, sometimes these trainings are afforded to elected officials at the last minute. Um, in reviewing this policy, I would ask the honorable body to consider having a waiver of up to a hundred dollars for council members if they want to go to these, um, four, two to four or two to six hour workshops, um, that are sponsored by the county. Because currently how the policy reads, it says we have to be a member of something. So, you know, our, the county is a subset of, of the state government. Uh, so I think that would be helpful for my office if individuals of this council would like to go to certain workshops that are provided on a county level that may charge twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars or sixty dollars, uh, without prior, prior approval, uh, because sometimes they do open up these particular seminars later to elected officials. So time may, um, pass for a meeting, so council, they wouldn't even be able to have prior approval. So if the honorable body would consider, um, adding that to this report, maybe up to a hundred dollars for seminars that are sponsored by county or state government that charge for these items. Thank you.
Um, but, okay, I hear, I hear you, I hear that, and that is something that can be considered. But I'm just wondering, um, what else might be helpful is if we could get what's here in writing and have that sent out to us and maybe every new person that comes on council should, uh, receive it as well. But could we also have a report? We get reports all the time of the city council's expenditure report, a monthly report, so that we can see what our council members are, uh, doing. So that if there's something, a membership or something that maybe we're not aware of, we can say, hey, you know, Myron, you're going to MBC Leo. How can I be a part of that? I didn't know about it or whatever. Because, uh, the other-
Join.
The other thing that I heard was, uh, information. And, um, it was with Councilman Mandelbaum. He had said there's certain times information. He doesn't know about different conferences and things in time to attend. It's always after the fact or, or memberships or things of that nature. So could we like have a, and this is no matter which way we vote on this. Could we have, I'm requesting or asking if we could have a city council expenditure report once a month and we could start, uh, for October, if you would give me August and September. And then we can start every month after that for the full council to receive a, uh, council expenditure report.
Yeah, that, that's easy, Madam President. I can tell you now for September and October, it's zero.
That's what I'm saying. If we could just have that report, because, uh, it, 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 I, I don't, I didn't know of any issues that we were having other than I guess now is just communication. People are saying they're not receiving certain information. I, I just, and, and I asked the question before, do we do double approvals now? If we need something approved prior to going, then do we also turn in an expense report and approve again afterwards?
Right, the question, the prior would be, if, if, if a council member calls my office and say, I want to go here. I would then start that process, get them registered, get a room, uh, and get their travel arrangements settled. Right now, if it's outside of the realm- Right now, if it's outside of the realm of city memberships, um then it would have to go for approval. So I could not get, I could not go ahead and book rooms and registrations and things of that nature if it's outside the realm of what was put in this policy. And then from there, any additional items that council has spent during that time at the conference, they're reimbursed for.
Uh Madam Chair, uh let me ask a question. Do you want uh itemized, the data is available, by the finance committee, I know what's out there. The data, you want to report per councilperson as well as itemized experience?
Yes.
Well, I'm I'm sure Austin uh we can we can pump that out on a monthly basis.
Yes, that's what I'm asking. Yes. Yep, I think that would be fine. But I I I, but based based on what I'm hearing, I don't see the problem. And that's why I was asking what what is changing? And the only thing that I'm hearing is that prior approval for anything that's not, um I don't know. I don't, anything that's not our normal conferences?
It's not customary, it's not customary. Like, we don't normally go to um uh a semi on architecture. You know, so anything that's not customary. I mean, we, this base, this this will be a baseline. This listing from the front end, that's the baseline. Uh and so we, and as we go along, maybe other things will be yeah, added as being baseline. So this this is just a a baseline. But as for the the monthly report, oh, oh, the the thing about uh these seminars. Oh, we know from beginning of every year, what M M L, Michigan Municipal League, American and everybody else will issue when they are having their conferences. And so somebody gets that, I know I'm I might, I get something from the, you know, finance officers or something, you know, when they having their conference. So Michigan Municipal League and American um League of Cities, they issue their their conference schedule uh at the beginning of their fiscal year. So if 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 the clerk gets that, I guess she could send it out.
Yeah, I I do send it out. I do, I do send it out, Councilman Brightwell. With COVID, things have just been a little different. Just a few weeks ago, I sent out about a conference um that the Michigan Municipal League had, and uh hardly anyone responded. So I, when I get the information, I send it out. We have been in a non customary time because of COVID. But generally, at the beginning of each year, I will send out all those conferences to all city officials. So as we get back to a norm, I will send those, and I do send things that periodically come up because we're not all robots. Sometimes the Michigan Municipal League will add a workshop one day. So they they have their conferences, but sometimes things are added um based on what's going on in government on the state, federal, and local level.
Okay, no, that that's fine. I mean, we we get stuff uh uh when you get just sent out and and uh it's up to council members to uh we record that in their memory and or uh decide to attend it, and or be sad, whether or not, and and then start the process of uh getting uh travel and booking. So if it's customary, but it's not customary, it it these are taxpayer dollars. And I I don't have a problem uh requesting that individuals spend the city dollars. They get it, they go through the procedure, make sure this is uh appropriate. I don't want to have to stand before stand before a citizen, say, how did you let so and so, you know, go off and spend that money? Uh when it had nothing to do with the city of Southfield. So, you know, this is the age old thing uh of my people are saying. And I just, I I don't want permission, I'm just asking for forgiveness. And so you, you go spend a thousand dollars, you want us to reimburse you for it. And we, you know, being good people, you are, you just might reimburse somebody, I don't know.
Well, I I really appreciate this discussion, and I really appreciate having something in writing. And like you explained, uh Councilman Brightwell, this is a baseline. Um and I think uh the request from the clerk is something we should, if we're gonna go this way, we should incorporate that so that uh county or smaller seminars can be attended. Um still, council will have the uh right to approve or deny because we still have to turn in an expense report. Nothing goes without us, without our approval. But uh it won't put so much of a uh fault, I guess, for the clerk. She wouldn't have to wait or be so their office would, for any last minute things. And but based on what uh I'm hearing, we don't really have a lot of things like that anyway. On this, we will receive something in writing. And I'm just wondering, should it be someplace accessible to all council people all the time, something we can uh you know, easily have access to? I don't know if there's a shared drive or something where we could keep or maintain this. We usually defer to the clerk to send us this, so having something in writing, I think, would be helpful. So uh council, I'm gonna ask you if you want to go with what's presented with the amendment for the clerks. I think she said up to a hundred dollars or whatever for a um seminar. Would we do that?
Council President?
Yes, um.
If I could ask the clerk, please, um is a hundred dollars going to be enough for the um the the com- the sessions that you're speaking of, or should it be a little bit more?
I started out conservative to see if I can, if if anybody would come on, come to the other side about it. And that that's low. I would prefer if we had it up to a little bit more, but I just wanted to gauge the temperature of the council.
Would three hundred dollars be better? Cause some, most uh seminars are like two hundred, two fifty, two ninety-nine.
I mean, three hundred would be the higher end, but that that could work very well. That would be great.
Well, let's just keep this as conservative as possible. I mean, I'm I'm just like, it's a finance chair. Let's keep it as simple and conservative as possible. I went to a county seminar a couple of years ago, it was only thirty-five dollars. They dealt with uh zoning appeal stuff. So let's be conservative with this and just say, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars, does that seem about right? I mean, uh I don't know, I I don't.
I I I think that we
I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Hawkins, uh Clerk Hawkins, I apologize. Uh this is, this is ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned. I don't even know why we been talking about this this long. Can we just leave things the way they aren't right now? This is not a problem. It's a problem looking for a solution, as far as I can tell. And I think it, we've had no problems in the years past, and I don't think we'll have any in the future. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
So can we, can we have a motion one way or the other? Cause we can leave things as is and look at the reports as they come through, and then if something is worth discussing, we can bring this back.
I'm not sure if we've heard from everyone around the table yet.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
This is Administrator Zorn. I I I just, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure we've had a problem with this. And if I were a council member, I would not want the restrictions. As I said to during Council President's meeting, I am often asked by usually bargaining groups to defend why council members should have the five thousand. And what I've said is, I want a council that takes part in organizations, that go to seminars, learning things, and bringing that back. When I look at this list of National League of Cities, Municipal League, uh G GFOA, all, they are all excellent organizations. However, sometimes I do want council people going out and taking part in other things. For example, myself, uh Alice Sevis and Councilman Cruz, we went to an ICMA sponsored class on public-private partnerships. Sometimes there are things on energy sustainability that are being put on by other groups. The, my observation over the years is council members are trying to get their schedule freed up before they can get an answer, because this is a part-time job for council members. They usually, you know, it, a lot of it comes up at the last minute. And, you know, I I I like some flexibility. Regarding council or council city clerk's recommendation, if that's the direction this moves in, I would also recommend that you include webinars. Now, I know International Economic Development Council does webinars once a month. Um that that's just another format uh of of that training is is happening. So I I just would hate to see any individual uh beca- become uh just a one size fits all. I mean, if someone wants to go out and attend a workshop on environmental justice and bring that knowledge back to Southfield, and you know, there've been a couple of times, you know, I'll use the oil well. It would have been real good to have had that information, that to have someone who's had some schooling in that. So those, those are my thoughts on this. The administration will carry out whatever directive uh council gives us, producing a monthly report. Become a turnkey item. But, you know, I I just don't see immediate need for council members to handcuff themselves. Um I I think you want some latitude flexibility and recognizing that most of you are are working full-time jobs, I imagine, you know, getting an hour, you know, an afternoon or a day away is something that comes up at the last minute, you know, when your schedule's free.
Thank you for that. Did, is there anyone else that wanted to voice the opinion? I think we've heard from everyone.
Uh this is uh uh Councilman Hoskins.
Yes.
And so I I think uh Administrator Zorn kinda touched on something that I I was kinda thinking about. Again, I don't know what, you know, I, you know, I'm just, I just got here. So I don't know what things were like before. I do remember seeing seeing things on the, on the council agenda, you know, over the years. You know, at you, kinda after the fact, things being approved. Um yeah, I think that's part of what this policy is trying to, we're trying to curtail. Uh is, there are certain things, we just want some kind of prior knowledge before the city approves it. But what council, uh Administrator Zorn kinda touched on is, my concern is that, yeah, are we handcuffing ourselves if we uh if we do something, are we limiting what we can do or where we can go? Uh is there, is there not enough flexibility in this? Um and you know, like, just like Clerk Hawkins brought up, you know, if we're gonna do, you know, some certain things come up, and maybe we should do a certain, a certain amount. It's little things like that that is is good to know. I I'm just, I'm just nervous about um if there's any issues with I'm just nervous about any issues with uh limiting or limiting what we can do, where we can go. And also, just from my perspective, not even talking about the travel stuff, it's actually more of the office supplies that I I personally didn't know. I mean, I knew like there are certain things, I knew we can get, I knew I got paper, I knew I got business cards. But I actually don't know the full, I didn't know the full scope of office supplies when I see like small furniture uh like on this list, for example, small furniture, like uh no cards. I I remember trying to get no cards, and there was an issue with that um like a few months ago. Um so there's little things like that, that I, having it somewhere uh would actually be helpful for me personally, or I'm sure for a newer councilperson. So I say, I say all that to say, uh I'm not sure where I am with this. But if I had, if we're, if we were voting on this right now, I probably won't know, just because I just need more time to um work out some of the details.
Okay, thank you for that. I and and I know we've discussed this for a minute. I I will strongly suggest that we leave things as it is, review the monthly expenditure report. And then if things come up that we have questions about, we can always revisit this, we can always change it. And then, and and if there's something that, you know, is egregious, we'll we'll address it.
Right. Madam, Madam Chair, I'm I'm gonna agree with you. Uh this, this could be gathered by, you know, uh our council people and our fiscal director. So this thing is financially sound, and as I say, it's a baseline. If going forward, this is a baseline, so anybody that follows out of the sky, this is what Southfield City Council tomorrow, we're gonna add something to it, the next week, or some something else that comes up. They said this should be, we just add it. So this is a baseline that satisfies a new councilperson, Jason. Maybe a Mary Ann next year or whatever. So we, we need a baseline, this is a baseline. If this limit anything, all it, all it, all it's doing is is documenting the fact that from this document forward, you can do anything you want, if you bring it to to council for approval. You know, that that's not, it's not, it's just like anybody who works in corporate America, you want to do something. Uh it it some of them are hard approvals, because they've never been seen before, and some are easier approval, because we've been doing it for twenty years. So uh I'm, I would like to see this document approved and go forward and make sure realize it's a baseline, but it's a live document based on circumstances and based on situational analysis as it comes up. It's not anything, this is not a lockbox, this is a live document.
Well, I I think I, that's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying I think we should leave things the way they are and then review the council expenditure reports on a monthly basis. And then as things come up, we should do whatever. I do agree we should have something in writing. And I think this is a good thing for writing, but I don't think we should change the way we are currently doing things. Yes, we should have something written, I agree with that, but I don't think we should change it until, because we like uh Administrator Zorn said, we could be tying our hands. We have quite a few questions. And as Councilman Hoskins said, he's not sure which way he would vote, and if he had to vote on this tonight, he would say no. So I think we would serve ourselves better if we remain with what we currently have, review our monthly expenditures, let's just say through the end of the year, and revisit this in January.
Uh I, there there is no ambiguity, there is ambiguity out there now. And with this document, there's certainty with this document, it gives you what what we are. Uh no, with our hands on that tag, if something comes up, all you got is, it it's approved, if it's approved by council. So this is, this is, it's a baseline, and it cuts out any ambiguity that was there before the document. And if Hoskins and Ambigant, uh Jason was uh unsure about something, now he's sure about something based on his document, and what's here. Uh so I'm 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 about, you know, I would prefer that we just go ahead and put something in, 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 in place. And it gets, this will, gets rid of the ambiguity that was there before. Now there's no ambiguity, and if there's something that more and more to deal with tomorrow, it it is brain before uh this body, that but if there, if there was nothing that was ambiguous it it's approved, it's gonna uh will be done historically. So it's, it and I'm, and I hate, I hate a board, because we just go back to the board that existed. And this, this, this document eliminates that board, and it was produced by mature council people and our financial director. So that's a pretty good body of produce a, a solid document. It wasn't a flimsy document, just poor document.
Okay, so then I I'll I'll ask council to make someone make a motion, but one way or the other, and then we'll vote it up or down.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that we postpone the decision on this until we've had a chance to cool down and think about it and and study it, because you can't write on a piece of paper somebody's ethics. And that's what we're talking about. Are they gonna use the money to help city of Southfield or not? So my motion is to postpone this for time certain. And I would say the uh end of October.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Give us a chance to cool down and 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 study it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm sorry, what what was the date?
The end of October. It's like a month.
Hey, the motion dies because Hey, the motion dies because there's not a second?
Councilwoman Banks?
Yes.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the city council expenditure policy with the addition of a hundred and fifty dollars um, for webinar and smaller conferences as presented to the council this evening.
Support.
Okay. It's been, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell for the approval of the city council expenditure policy with the amendment of a hundred and fifty dollars uh, for the clerks uh, to be able to approve a hundred and fifty dollars for webinars or in other seminars. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fraser? Fraser?
Yeah, I'm.
I'm sorry.
I'm doing the Hoskins things, I don't know how I'm gonna vote. I'll say yes.
Hoskins?
No.
Mandelbaum? Taylor?
No.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz? Cruz? Motion dies.
What was the vote?
Three to two, you need four to pass a motion.
You need four to pass a motion, or is it the majority?
It's, it's.
There's seven people here, you gotta have four.
Um, there's only six people here, looks like Councilman Mandelbaum is not here.
Then shouldn't we, should we wait till we have the full council?
I thought I heard him talking tonight.
Is, is Cruz there? Eh, I seen him.
He's been there.
Yeah.
He said he was muted.
Madam Chair, when can we get this discussed again for certain?
We, we, we could put it on our very next meeting.
Okay. Right, um. Mrs. Banks, is that agreeable to you, is have this, what, what, what was your position on this again, Ms. Banks?
I mean, I guess that's fine, but I'm just, I, I'm still confused. We had um, three yes and two no's, so I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how that didn't pass um, to the attorney.
I'm with you.
There's only six people present, so wouldn't a three-two pass?
So, I'm listening to this, I could not hear who voted. I thought that everyone was here, so I was just gonna ask if maybe you do just a, a, a voice vote again, but it should be the majority. And I don't know how many we had on, I thought we had the seven on.
We don't, we do not have seven on. Um, I will do a vo- a voce, a voice vote again uh, for clarity, if that works, Madam President.
Oh, yes.
Cruz?
No.
Fraser?
Yes, I voted yes before.
Hoskins?
No.
Mandelbaum is absent for the, it's a holiday. Taylor?
No.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
So the vote is three-three, so there's no majority here, so that motion fails.
Let's move on.
Next item.
Motion failed.
Okay. Then, um, our next item is the approval of cost increase for Green Tree South Water Main Improvement Project.
Good evening, City Council, uh, City Engineer Lee Schultz here. I'm sure you recall at the August twenty-third council meeting, council authorized some additional funding to the annual concrete and asphalt maintenance contracts so that we could make more repairs on local roads, ideally yet this season. Um, since that time, an assessment of the areas of greatest concern has been completed and the required pavement work quantified. This work exceeds the authorized additional funding for these annual contracts, but the Mount Vernon subdivision identified as one of these areas of concern is conveniently adjacent to the Green Trees subdivision, which is currently under construction. This existing contract includes favorable unit pricing for concrete patching. Uh, this evening, we'd like to request a cost increase to this existing Green Trees South Water Main Improvement Project contract in the amount of nine hundred ninety thousand dollars um, so that we can complete this neighborhood concrete patching for the Mount Vernon subdivision. Um, there is additional funds available in our local street fund and that would require a budget adjustment, that is also part of the ask this evening. And the result would be, we, besides having Green Trees new water main and uh pavement patching in Green Trees, then we could take care of this Mount Vernon subdivision, which does have significant pavement needs.
Okay. Uh, council, I'll turn to you, and I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Questions, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Fraser?
Uh, Madam Engineer, did you say that you're adding, you're asking for another nine hundred thousand dollars?
Nine hundred ninety thousand total, so that's nine hundred thousand in concrete patching and an estimated ninety thousand, which is ten percent, for inspection and testing.
What is the total s- size of the contract?
The existing contract is, well, the previous authorization for the whole project, so that includes the engineering as well, is approximately two point five million, and we'd be adding just under a million to that, and so then looking for about a three point five million dollar new contract cost.
Sure, and about a third more to the contract?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, did you wanna, did you have any comments?
No, I'm very grateful that this is going forward. There's many places, excuse me, there are many places in the neighborhood where the cement is gravel. It's totally degraded. Many complaints from this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn. I just wanna stress, what we've been able to do here is take advantage of the excellent concrete unit price that we got in the Green Trees um, pro- uh, south uh, i- in, in the Green Trees South Water Main Project. Uh, that concrete rate is twenty-five percent less than our spot concrete, and um, this neighborhood really needs it. The contractor is working, eh, you know, in, in the same neighborhood, same block, just allows us to extend this a little bit further south, and this'll make a big difference in improving our pace or score uh, and, and just doing a better job managing this asset. The fact that we were able to get this unit pricing, um, that's what, that was the driver uh, on my end to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for those comments. Uh, council, can we entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell?
Yes.
I'm, I make a motion that we approve the cost increase for Green Tree Improvement Project. As indicated.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Fraser for the approval of the cost increase for Green Trees South Water Main Improvement Project. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fraser?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz? Cruz? Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
All right, our next is communications. And I just have to remind everybody that we have our uh, standard Rule Seven, where it states that no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council, and any person who violates this section will be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent, or your mic will be muted. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please open the lines for anyone that wishes to speak?
The lines are open.
My name is Gerard Muller, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Madam President, since nineteen sixty-nine, there has been five editions of the Southfield City Charter published with the outdated Chapter Seven contained within that describes a dinosaur court system that takes up to ten percent of the total contents of the charter. And to top it off, this city charges fifteen dollars per outdated copy for this antiquated pamphlet. Madam Chair, what is your council's justification for publishing repeatedly five outdated editions of the city charter at an outrageous price for this useless pamphlet? In a word, a relic. Madam Chair, this is all happening on your watch. Also, Madam Chair, on your charter's cover page, it states, and I quote, "This pamphlet is a reprint of the charter of the city of Southfield, Michigan, by order of the city council," unquote. City council, that's you folks, isn't that right, Madam Chair? Uh, there's no one else here to blame, is there, Madam Chair, for this obsolete, overpriced artifact that this council calls a city charter? After fifty-two years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do your jobs, and also do yourselves a felicitous favor and delete Chapter Seven from your outdated charter, along with the many other outdated items, by creating a charter commission under the authority of Section Eighteen of the Home Rule City Act of nineteen oh nine. If not now, then when? If not this council, then who? If the dysfunctional city of Detroit can mandate periodically a ballot initiative for a proposed charter commission in order to try to update their charter, like last August, then the Southfield City Council should be able to do the very same thing. If not this council, then who? Who else, pray tell? Who else, Madam Chair? Who else but you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. Good evening to this council. I just cannot believe that we go through the same problem every election. When a person decides to run for elected office and they go to the local clerk's office, I was under the impression that they got a packet, and in that packet, it would talk about the positioning of your signs. There are members from the city that's running for office that have put signs in the right of way. And for that particular department issuing out packets, that person knows better. There are also people that are putting out signs in vacant properties, which tells me you do not have permission. If you own that property, would you appreciate, as the owner slash taxpayer of that property, that someone put a campaign sign there without permission? I don't think that you would. Several of the candidates running for city council have put signs on my friend's property that you don't have permission for. Now, if this is what you're going to do as a candidate running for office with signs, how and why would we believe that you're going to make the most intelligent and informed decisions for the people since the city of Southfield has a strong council-style government? That question needs to be answered. Now, after this election, I'm going to ask the council to do one of two things, have a seminar that I will conduct to show you the do's and don'ts of putting out campaign signs. Or the city should pass an ordinance and we don't have any campaign signs. Another problem that a lot of candidates do, you flood the city with five thousand signs and then you leave them out. You have one week after the election to pick up your signs. Now, if that's not done for this election, I'm gonna call you out publicly, and I don't care, Madam Chair, about the statement that you read prior. If you don't wanna be called out, you need to get your campaign signed, and you have a week to do it.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Madam President, we don't have anyone else for uh, communications this evening, thank you. Thank you. Communications are now closed. We will go to the council portion. And again, I'll start with you, Ms. uh, Councilwoman Banks.
I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, nothing uh, tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz? Okay, Councilman Fraser?
I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm here, Madam President.
Oh, okay.
I just couldn't get, get the uh, call on, the mute on right now. But no, I have nothing for this evening. Thank you, wonderful meeting, and uh, wonderful to hear from the residents, and uh, we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fraser?
Yes, I do have a question, uh, of the city administrator. Uh, can we find out where we're at on the speed bumps?
The, we're, we're real close. We have, we are gonna, we are proposing a, a demonstration project, which is in my, within my spending jurisdictions. We've identified five locations, working with the city engineer, uh, police department, and the uh, H, HRC. I'm waiting just for some final cost information. Some of the locations will be in um, Section Thirty-Five, where we have some asphalt projects going in. Those will be humps that are built into the actual asphalt surface that upon, if, if they work, they'll remain, if not, they'll be easil- easily uh, removed. And then, uh, I- be eas- easily, uh, removed. And then, uh, I believe the other three, three of the locations will be MATS, so stay tuned. I am just waiting for some final cost information. I actually have a map. Um, we should probably be able to get something out definitely by next Monday.
Okay, uh, I was.
There, I, let me just comment. There is a list of, I think, twenty, I don't have it in front of me. I think we've got twenty-eight or twenty-nine locations that have come up. But we wanna get a, see how the, the general public responds to these when, uh, upon installation. Most committees, most communities will actually have a petition process where a neighborhood will have to petition to get them. We're proposing to skip that on the five locations, and just to see how the community responds to them. Interestingly enough, there are people who say they want them, but once they're installed, apparently there's, um, they become a source of complaints because of the noise level. Um, I have one other piece, uh, an email I haven't responded to from HRC, and they're offering us the tour with our, uh, police, uh, with the fire department for emergency services, uh, a different type. That's basically where we're at on that topic right now.
Okay, 'cause I was hearing it on the news of what Detroit's doing. It sounds like they're buying on by the train load.
Yes, they are. In fact, uh, their engineer last week offered, uh, to give us the tour. Uh, I have not spoken to the city engineer about that, uh, but I'm actually thinking a handful of us need to, to tour. I know our city engineer, she's going in, in, in towards some, and I spent the Saturday morning touring, uh, different neighborhoods, uh, both the MAT, uh, the ones that are laid on top of an existing street, and the type that are built in to the street.
Okay, uh, uh, and the second question I have is, the, uh, cameras that can, that are already installed, and we approved the purchase of more, or not the purchase, but extending the contract of the ones that are already in that can take pictures of license plates, uh, up to a hundred miles an hour? What is, what are we going to use that information for? I know the write-up said, uh, looking for stolen cars and, and, and things, or, but is that it? Is that what we're looking for, or?
That was what the, uh, police chief indicated. I don't know if Chief Baron is on. I would rather put that question to him, uh, i- if I may?
Okay.
All right.
All right, uh, can wait.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. And Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, I have, uh, nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have nothing new to add either. Uh, so we'll go to the mayor?
I just have, uh, two quick things. Um, I wanna remind everybody that, uh, this, uh, Sunday, um, uh, October third, uh, we are having the walk, uh, to raise awareness of domestic violence. Um, it will start on the municipal campus, and I'll make a, uh, two-and-a-half-mile walk over to the Red Poll Park and back. It starts at eleven AM and concludes by two. Um, there will be a program, uh, as a kickoff, and you can go on a line to register. The first five hundred people to register for the walk will receive a walker's package, um, mailed to their home, which includes a T-shirt, wristband, face mask, um, and there'll be, um, uh, the police department will be on hand, as well as our fire department, um, and various partners, uh, Forty-Fifth District Court, the school, Haven, uh, Oakland County, and, uh, the Southfield Domestic Violence Group, um, are all sponsors of this, um, uh, walk, our second annual, and also I meant to mention, uh, the, um, uh, farm, the, uh, uh, Family Assistance for Renaissance Men, uh, group itself. That's, uh, that's on Sunday, uh, August third, and then, uh, the following week, on Sunday, um, uh, I, did I say October third? Um, the following Sunday, October tenth, uh, that's the Walk Against Hate. It's a slightly smaller, um, route, uh, and it will, uh, start also at the municipal campus and, um, go about the, um, uh, area across the street. So the walk will start at ten AM and conclude at eleven AM on October tenth, and this is in partnership with the city of Southfield and the, um, Michigan Chapter, uh, the Anti-Defe- uh, Defamation League. Uh, that's all I have this evening. Thank you, um, Council President Taylor.
Thank you. Um, city administrator, did you have anything else to add?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney?
Good evening. Um, I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Our city treasurer? Our city planner?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City assessor? Oh, I see he's on. Okay. City engineer, did you have anything else? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we have nothing new to schedule. We do have a closed session, so I will entertain a motion for us to go into closed session.
Uh, before we go into that, uh, Madam President, if I could, this is Councilman Cruz. I just wanted to wish, uh, Councilman Fraser a happy belated birthday. Uh, he just had, uh, just a day ago or so, and, uh, you know, I think we all wanna wish him well for another year, and, uh, and many more to come.
Well, you sure know how to pick on an old man. Thank you so much.
Happy birthday.
Uh, Council? Council, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion. We go into closed session?
Support, like, uh, Councilman Cruz.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for this council to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Fraser?
Yes.
Madam President, we're going into, uh, closed session for the discussion of material exempt from discussion or disclosure by the state or federal statute. Remember, we have to say the whole thing when we go into closed session.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Thank you.
No problem. That's what I'm here for. No problem.
Thank you. So we'll, uh, go into closed session. Everyone should have the number, so we'll, uh, uh, go right now. Let's have about, in about two minutes, so at, um, eight-twenty. Okay, so, everyone, we'll go into closed session.
Madam President, everyone is here.
Thank you. Council, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion for the approval for the city of Southfield to authorize the city to enter into an engagement with Cyberforce QLLC to conduct cybersecurity services.
So moved. Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Fraser, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the city of, for the approval for the city of Southfield to be authorized to enter into the engagement with Cyberforce QLLC to conduct the cybersecurity services. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other business for this meeting tonight? From anyone? Okay. Hearing none, I now declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.